Previously called to order, the presence of a quorum has been established. The meeting's been duly called and the notes of meetings have been posted in time and manner required. Monthly meetings of the Board are designed to conduct the business of governing the school system in public, however, this is not a meeting to interact with the public. We welcome you as guests to observe and listen, and we do have a scheduled time within the agenda for the public to address the Board. First item on our agenda is the Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Bergfeld. Please stand.
Let us pray. Father, we come to you to thank you for the change of the seasons and the start of a new school year. We ask your blessings over the students, teachers, administrators of TISD this year, and we ask that you let your light shine through us in all of our actions as a Board. Let us bring glory to your name, I pray this in my Savior's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
We have no action coming out of executive session. Brings us to item number seven, approval of the minutes. Are there any changes, edits to the minutes? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. President, I move we approve the minutes as written.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next up is Continuous Improvement and Lone Star Governance Goal 2.1, Advanced Placement Scores.
As Mr. Brown makes his way up to the table, at the October workshop, we had a report provided by Mr. Brown about the increased enrollment and accessibility at both of our high schools, early college high school as well, in regard to AP and dual credit offerings along with CTE certifications. Tonight's presentation will be on Advanced Placement Scores. Mr. Brown?
Thank you Reverend Hager, Dr. Crawford, and trustees. I appreciate the opportunity to share some information about our advanced placement program, our enrollment, and our scores that we received back over the summer, and so I'll just get right into it. Basically, we talked a little bit about Lone Star Governance Goal 2.1, which is a college readiness goal specifically related to AP scores, and then look at the actual AP scores, students that scored a three or higher on any of their AP exams. And then the mean scores would be the averages that our students have on their AP exams compared to students across the state of Texas. So we're going to look at those scores. And then finally, AP Scholar Data, which is a cumulative honor that students can receive when they score on exams. The goal itself, the college career and military readiness goal, I mean, the domain for the state, these five criteria affect the college career and military readiness accountability in all three of the domains, and particularly in domain one and three. Three is subgroups and one is all groups. Number one, it says that students will meet the success initiative criteria on the ACT, SAT, or Texas Success Initiative Assessment in both Language Arts and in Math. That's one of the criteria. The one specifically that this Board goal addresses is number two. Students will score three or higher on an AP exam. The third criteria, that students will earn college credit for at least three hours in the Language Arts or Math, or nine hours combined in other subjects. Fourth criteria is that students will earn a TEA-approved industry-based certification, some of the information that we've shared over the summer from Career Technology Education. And then finally, the fifth criteria, enlist in the United States Armed Forces. So this specifically will address number two. The district has set the goal, and this is going back baseline to 2016, the percentage of tolerancy students taking AP exams who score three or higher will increase by an average of at least 2% annually over the next five years. So this is a percentage of a score rather than a raw number of how many students are enrolled in AP, how many students are taking AP exams, or how many students are passing AP exams. It's an actual percentage, and we're going to look at both of those as I go through this. But you see that the year-one target would be the scores in the tests that were taken in May of 2017 at 46.5, and we exceeded that. And then this current target, year-two, 2018, is based on the May 2018 scores. So sometimes this is asked as this lag data. This is real-time data. So the students that just took the test in May received the results back, and now we're reporting that out to you. That goal's set at 48.5. And so as you can see, as you come across, just looking at the last three years, the first set of numbers, the first row there, has the number of AP students who took at least one exam, and some took two, three, four. Actually, I had one student who took five different AP exams. But if they just took one exam, they're included in this list. So you can see that two years ago, we had 490 students taking AP exam in May of 2017. That number went up 33 to 523, and then we had a pretty significant jump last year in May 2018 for 665 students to take at least one exam. And then the second row, it's the students that took exams that scored at least one of their exams that had a three or higher. So you can kind of see where those numbers go. And then May of 2018, there were 333 students that took AP exams that scored three or higher. And that came right out, almost dead on the money, is 50%. And so the target being 48.5%, we increased that. One of the things I'd point out is just the increase in the numbers. We really have a lot more students challenging themselves by taking these courses and subsequently taking the exams as well. There's just a brief video, and obviously, this isn't the time. Our students are already well into their, this is the fifth week of the six weeks, so that they're currently enrolled in AP classes, but very soon, we're going to be sharing information to getting students to think ahead to next year for their AP and dual credit options that they'll have in the 2019-2020 school year. So there's just a little brief PSA that we've put together.
What is AP?
AP, or Advanced Placement, is a program created by the College Board, which offers college-level courses and exams to high school students.
So how do I earn college credit?
After completing an AP class, students typically take the AP exam in that subject, which can earn them credits and accelerate a placement in college.
Are AP courses only for students who always get good grades?
AP courses are for any student who is academically prepared and motivated to take on college-level courses.
I hear Tyler ISD offers a wide variety of AP courses.
Yes. More than 1,000 Tyler ISD high school students are enrolled in these AP courses.
It seems that AP courses ask that you come willing to do your best work, and I'm willing to work hard.
More students are ready for AP than you'd think. Talk to your counselor about courses that interest you.
AP has the power to transform me and my future.
So that's just a brief informational public service announcement, I guess you'd say, but to get it on the minds of more and more students that they do have an opportunity to take these courses. And it really is open to all students, and we want to encourage them to do so. Some trend data, kind of at the back end of the report, to look at some where we've been and where we are now, where we hope to head. If you look at the green bar and the numbers, that's just going back five years. It kind of just gives you a graphical representation of the numbers. So we've almost doubled the number of students taking AP exams in Tyler ISD over these last five years, from 349 to this past May, 665 students in the district. And then the lighter shade there, the tan or beige, it shows that we actually have more than doubled the number of students who have scored a three or higher on an exam. We were at 155, and this past May, we were at 333. This is another way to measure the program, is how are our students doing compared to other students that are taking AP courses in other districts across the state of Texas? And so, and I think in your documents, you should have a list of all the AP exams. I pulled out some of the ones that our students performed the highest in terms of the mean compared to the state of Texas. And this is across the entire state, all students combined into one large pool. So you can see that AP European History, which is a new course that we added last year, that Tyler ISD students had a 3.75 average compared to the state at 2.96. And I won't read all the numbers, but you can go down and see AP Human Geography had a .74 higher average. Tyler ISD students then did the state average down through Art History, AP Calculus AB. The English Literature and Composition is the senior-level English IV AP exam. They were half a point above the state average in AP Biology. It was real close to half a point above. And the numbers of the students, and that's another thing, you always have to figure how many students are actually taking these exams, because if it's just two or three students. Just to give you an example, some of the numbers in English Literature and Composition, we had 71 students taking that exam. We had 46 AP Biology students taking the AP Biology exam, to kind of see where those numbers come from. And then I just put that just as a chart. It's the same numbers, but just looking across how we did in the green in Tyler ISD on some of these select courses compared to how students across the state did. One thing, we give 24 AP exams. We don't give every single AP exam. We're working toward offering more courses and bringing those online. We'll be adding AP Computer Science this year. But of the 24 exams that we administered in May, we outscored the state average on 17 of the 24 our students did in Tyler ISD. And that's all students combined. It's early college high school, John Tyler High School, Robert E. Lee High School on those. And then the last little set of information, it's always good to celebrate individual students, because those are numbers, and these are actual students. But the AP Scholar Awards that the College Board gives is pretty much their most prestigious award based on the AP program. And there are four different levels that a student can be distinguished in. AP Scholar, as you can see there, that means that a student, over the course of their time in high school, they have at least three exams, AP exams, that they scored three or higher on. So it could be sophomore year, junior year, and senior year, or all in one year, but they do have at least three exams of three or higher. AP Scholar with Honor is the next step up. Now, it's saying that not only do they have to have four exams that they score three or higher on, all exams combined, they have to average at least a 3.25. So you can't really have any bad exams. You have to keep your average up on all the exams you take. And then the next level, of course, AP Scholar with Distinction, that average is increased to 3.5 on all exams taken, not just the ones that students are counting, but all exams. And that has to be five or more three-plus scores. And then the last one on there is extremely a prestigious honor, but when you look at the criteria, the average on all exams taken must be a four, when you put them all together, and they have to have eight or more AP exams. It's not a three or higher on this one. It's a four or higher on eight exams. So that is a tremendous level of accomplishment. And these are some numbers, just looking back over the last three years in Tyler ISD, of the AP Scholars that we've been able, that students have achieved these levels. So you can see the AP Scholar numbers, three years ago, excuse me, four years ago, 25 AP Scholars. This past May, we had 53 students achieve that level. The AP Scholar with Honor, we had 17 students this past year. AP Scholar with Distinction, that's the 3.5 average in the five AP exams or more, 25 students. And the one that's really impressive is the eight. We had eight students in Tyler ISD score four or higher on eight AP exams, and they have to have that cumulative average of the four or higher. And I will tell you that two of those eight were sophomores. These are not automatically just seniors, and it doesn't just talk about graduating class. Two of those eight are sophomore students, so they're coming back for more this year. And then, of course, the total number of AP Scholar Awards at 103. And that, once again, that's just seeing that, just a visual of it. You can see kind of the different bars and where they are. That's just reflective of the number. That's pretty much the information I have, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have about the AP program, the AP exams, or the scores.
Well, as I stated at our workshop, I am very happy to see the increase in the numbers of students participating and to see the great scores that we are observing, and I appreciate your diligence in working to show us that it could be done.
Yes. Speaking of numbers, I was encouraged to see that, you know, percentages that were scoring higher were holding with the pattern, even though our numbers were higher, you know. I would imagine that before, you know, kids that were really confident that they would pass that test took it, and those, you know, that weren't might not. But when you start encouraging kids to get in AP courses, and you start encouraging them to take AP classes, I mean, exams, then I would imagine that you might have a fall-off a little bit in percentages, but we didn't, and that is a testament to our teachers and our staff and leadership.
It really is. I appreciate you saying it, because that percentage is certainly important, but we want to see participation increase. And we don't, we want students to be encouraged and supported to challenge themselves to take the AP exams. And you're absolutely right. To have 142 more students take AP exams this year, but hold steady, many, many of these students were sophomore and juniors that were taking, they literally challenged themselves with one single AP class, took one single AP exam, and now realize that they can do this.
Board, one thing I'll add is, I think, four years ago, we found out that a lot of our AP students were taking that for the weight for the GPA, and they were kind of bailing out on the actual AP exam. And that's when we made it important. And of course, that kind of coincided with Mr. Brown's ascension into his new role as Executive Director of College and Career. So got to have a little skin in the game to go get those GPA points. We asked that of our parents, we asked that of our students, and they've responded extremely well, that it's just not about getting that GPA for the class ranking. They have had the courage to go take one more standardized test, because that's what an AP test is, on one day, and they've performed for us. We're very appreciative of our students and our teachers who have really guided them along the path.
Yes, they have.
Particularly when you couple this with the dual credit presentation we had at workshop, it's showing that we're doing a good job of challenging our more advanced students as well. And so this is great. This is real money that you save families when kids are successful here, so that's great.
Before you leave, Mr. Brown, when you go back to the slide about the very front, it talked about CCMAR, or CCMR, you know, on this Constitution Day, we had a great Constitution Day today, a lot of activities at our campuses, because it is Constitution Day today.
What day is it?
It's Constitution Day today. And we wanted to make sure that we got that out there. There was a lot of activities tweeted. I'm sure if you called the receptionist at each school today, they'd have been able to tell you exactly what they were doing for Constitution Day today. But in saying that, one thing I'm really concerned about, and the public needs to know about this, it needs to be on the television, we're really concerned about the accountability system and the CCMR especially, in regard to the, I guess, phasing out of some of the House Bill 5 components that are in the accountability system. Y'all remember House Bill 5? There was a lot of talk about that. There was a lot of money spent across the state to get that passed in legislature, to get it implemented inside of our schools, to where they're taking a coherent sequence of courses. Well, that may not be in the new, the future accountability system, to where you actually get accountability credit as a campus or a school system for the actual learning experience in House Bill 5. In other words, they're talking about now, just going to whether or not you got a certification or not. Yes, another standardized test on one single day will determine your accountability fate. So keep your ears open for that. Any chance you get to talk to a legislator about the CCMR, we need to protect the way the system is now and not keep changing it. There was a lot of work, again, done in House Bill 5. A lot of parents put a lot of work into it. PTAs put a lot of work into it. Legislators got behind it and passed it. And now we're wanting to change the rules to go to a high-stakes test. That's all we're talking about, high-stakes test, high-stakes test, as opposed to the good old days, like we learned, where there's a blending of that, or some of us, some of y'all didn't have to take high-stakes one-day test. But certainly, we want to make sure we protect that, and I wanted to use this opportunity as the platform to be able to say we need to protect the House Bill 5 components of the accountability system, here on a great Constitution Day.
I believe I saw in the news article where Tyler Union College credited part of their, a percentage of their increase in student enrollment to students who are taking these dual credit courses.
Absolutely. You know, there's a big debate with the Higher Ed Coordinating Board about whether or not dual credit courses and AP courses are effective for high school students. I think there's some politics in play on that, to be honest with you. But at the same time, TJC, who works very well with Tyler ISD, can attribute that. I think their increased enrollment and their participation and their resiliency for their students to completion, because we're getting them earlier, and they're having success in our schools with AP and dual credit. Yes, ma'am.
One more thing, I'm so used to hearing about how TISD is behind the state. You know, we always get these, you know, reports out, and we always seem to be lagging, and East Texas is lagging, and it's so refreshing to see that TISD is ahead of the state average in something. And I'm hoping, over the coming years, you know, the rest of the district will follow. But kudos to your hard work and being ahead of the state curve right there. It's good to see.
The teachers have done some outstanding work, these students.
And Mr. Wassman, as far as the rest of the data, we're actually above the regression line, so.
Yes.
You know, C+. We're going to work on that. It's not anything to be proud about, but certainly, there are some districts that we compare ourselves to that are below that regression line. And certainly, that's a flip probably from where we came four or five years ago to where we are today.
Amen.
We're trending in the right direction, getting first downs.
Absolutely. I believe it. I see you.
On Constitution Day.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
On Constitution Day.
Okay, next on our agenda is public participation. We have two speakers. First is Mr. Tim Geddes.
Getters.
Getters? Yes, Getters. You're right. You have five minutes, sir.
Thank you. I wanted to speak about the past two public meetings where they discussed the achievement levels of the students in the Tyler ISD, and also the comments made by the education experts regarding the precipit, you know, the proportional percentage of achievement in the per grade and per school. Since the, I want to propose some recognition of some problems and also offer some solutions. And since the creation of the U.S. Department of Education, the U.S. has dropped in global education rankings from nearly number one, depending on what year you quote, to approximately 34. In some rankings, one called the Program for International Student Achievement, acronym PISA, where we dropped from, to an unimpressive 38th out of 71 countries in math and 24th in science, among the 34 members of Organization for Economic Cooperation Development, which sponsors PISA, the U.S. ranked 30th in math and science. And this is in rankings with schools that don't spend nearly as much per pupil. So it would seem to me that with the strong Texas delegation that we have in Congress right now, that we might be able to achieve some disruptive improvements in the approach for education. Because during that same period of time, while the U.S. national, international ranking has dropped, Texas's national ranking is ranked anywhere, depending on the year you quote, 34th to 43rd. And I don't know exactly where Tyler ranks in the Texas state ranking. But it's, but one of the things that came to me immediately was some studies done by the university and the Douglas Mental Health University Institute in Montreal, which lists that students, because of the school scheduling, are not getting enough sleep. Most of them are sleep deprived, and that due to the scheduling for bus pickups and the start times for schools, that their achievement levels are 7% to 8% worse in French and English. And the National Sleep Foundation recommends that children ages 5 through 12 get 10 to 11 hours of sleep, and teenagers need about nine. Studies show that only 15% get that. So the recommendation of this study was that, and others in support of it, was that there should be a later start time for schools, 8:30 or later. And that would be, that would seemingly, according to the studies, provide a nearly immediate increase in student achievement compared to the small incremental improvements that we're seeing currently in the system as it is right now. Another quote, even fewer, even 20 fewer minutes of needed sleep may significantly affect behavior in many areas. One study showed that those students with Cs, Ds, and S got about 25 fewer minutes of sleep and went to bed on average 40 minutes later than A and B students. And also, this caused an inattention, poor concentration, moodiness, behavior problems, poor academic performance, and social skills, to name a few. So I wanted to bring this to your attention for us to consider that what we might need to do is introduce some disruptive, can you, I see my time?
You've got a minute ten.
Okay. We might want to do some things regarding some disruptive interjections into the current system to affect some better outcomes for our students, and start from there. The other thing that I wanted to bring to your attention was that I don't think that the Tyler ISD webpage is adequately posts for public notification when someone needs to be in attendance and have filled out a registration slip to speak before the meeting. There may be quite a few senior citizens in our area that don't have internet access, and for them to have to go searching through an internet site that they can't find, particularly, if they might find it on the front page, that would be great. Otherwise, they have to go through the administrator's rules and get to page 11 and search through here and find that, you know, they need to be here 10 minutes before the start of the meeting. And as the meetings don't always start on time, then they may be cut out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Getters. Next is Ms. Vanessa Holmes.
Mr. President and Board members, Dr. Crawford, good evening, and thank you for allowing me to address you from here instead of that seat over there. It feels a lot better here. Much was stated at complication and at last month's regular Board meeting about the great news we received regarding Dogan Meeting Standard this past school year. While I am for once speechless, and then awe of what I feel was nothing short of God's hand, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge others that have not been mentioned. First, I want to reiterate how amazing the students were at Dogan. It was my pleasure to have led over 1,400 students in my three years when I served as principal. They left believing and achieving, and I could not be more proud. I also want to again acknowledge the great staff we had on campus. Together, we built dreams and shattered ceilings, and for them and to them, I am eternally grateful. To the Board, I want to say thank you. In three years, I received warm greetings and words of encouragement. Some of you sent me cards, some visited, and I thank you. Specifically to Reverend Mason, who attended Dogan and reminded me every time she saw me that she attended Dogan. Thank you for your prayers. And the official questioning glare that you gave me from a raised eyebrow that let me know you were still checking and you had not forgotten. To Dr. Crawford, words cannot be expressed. Of many things I admire is your ability to see without being seen, and how you seem to somehow know in a few conversations your first year that I could handle this challenge. I can only say thank you for your belief. I want to thank Mr. Sanchez, who's not here, who reminds me every week that I was his first principal hire. He provided for me sometimes comedic relief, and I want to thank him for that. In three years, I had two PSPs and two consultants, and each one of them made me better. I have to thank Ms. Vanora Jones for leading them to me. I also had two SIOs, Ms. Ward and Mr. Bitter. For their direction and their correction, because I am a handful at times, I owe them extreme gratitude. There is probably no chief sitting in here, that's now an assistant superintendent, who did not at one time offer me support, and that came from the top down through their respective staffs. Dr. Hanson was one that I could count on for always a yes. Mr. Jones, a quiet no, and Ms. Bjork, a stern no. By the time the students took the test, everyone, literally from the district maintenance worker to the custodians and police officers, were encouraging the students, and that was the most amazing gift my students could have received, to know that someone believed in them. Thank you to every single person, my colleagues and other staff members at TISD that never doubted, and what seemed impossible did happen. In closing, there's one other person whose name I must call. That's Mr. John Orbaugh. You know you're special when the Executive Director of Technology takes an interest in you and supports you and encourages you the way he did. I will forever be grateful. Through much prayer, I have resolved the following regarding closing, and this year... Through much prayer, I have resolved the following regarding closing. In this year's transitioning of the students, it was necessary. For our story, God turned it. It is finished, and for that, it is well. Thank you.
Wow.
Thank you, Ms. Holmes. Okay, that brings us to item ten.
Mr. President, I know we aren't supposed to comment, but since she's an employee--
She's kind of not the public. Yeah, she's kind of not the public.
That has to be probably the first time I've ever seen an employee compliment in public speaking. That has to be the first, and I've been on this board twelve years. That's simply amazing. Superintendent, you got a special lady there?
We've said that a bunch of times.
Yes, sir, I have.
Still true. Okay, so item ten, we're pulling B, C, G, H, and I. So I'll accept a, any discussion on the non-fold items. If not, I'll take a motion for A, D, E, and F.
I move we approve items A, D, E, and F under Roman numeral ten.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Mason. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item B, Dr. Crawford?
Per board policy, we pull gifts and donations, five thousand dollars or above. So we're following board policy tonight. One, Hall Buick GMC, in the amount of five thousand dollars for the T I S D, Tyler I S D, excuse me, Communications Department. Great partnership that we have with Hall Buick GMC, along with other dealerships here, but they've stuck with us and very proud of that. They sponsored the Gary Moore Award here at Convocation and some other opportunities that we have. And then the other thing that we have here is from Andy Woods PTA, over sixty-two hundred dollars to go to Andy Woods Elementary. Appreciate all of our PTAs doing what they can to help our schools and make sure they let us know when school zone camera, or excuse, schools on camera, school zone flashing lights are not working. Great partners in making sure we get those working and the same thing at Andy Woods, volunteering their first week of school when we had a little overage in our kindergartners. Those volunteers, those parents really came in as well. And then another thing is this donation that they're providing for us, very supportive of our school there and very appreciative of them from our school district.
Okay, any discussion on that item? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. President, it is with grateful heart that I move that we receive and approve the donations from Hall Buick GMC and Andy Woods PTA.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Nation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item C, the internal audit plan.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Martinez and I have the pleasure of serving on the Internal Audit Committee. I just wanted to briefly say that it is a pleasure to work with our auditor, Mrs. Jan Coker. I was a part of the board and I don't know, were you, Mr. Burckfield, when we hired Ms. Coker?
Couldn't tell you that.
You don't remember?
I know it was a monumental occasion, but I don't know.
Well, it was our, it's funny. It was our desire that we might make sure that we have someone who's looking out for the best interests of the board of trustees as well as working along with the school system, the school district, to ensure that we're being physically conservative and there is no fraud or anything of that play, thing taking place, anything of that nature taking place. And so Ms. Coker has a plan here and Mr. Martinez and I have met with her already and we approved this plan and we want to recommend it now to the board of trustees for approval, for action. Did you have anything you want to say, Ms. Coker, briefly?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the kind words, Reverend Mason, and I want to start out saying good evening to President Hager, board members, and Dr. Crawford. And I want to thank you for the opportunity for being able to bring the audit plan to you for review and approval. Let's see. There were a few items I just want to point out regarding the audit plan is that it was developed from a risk assessment results and the results were reviewed with the district management and the audit committee with opportunities for all to provide input into the audit plan this year. And the audit plan allows flexibility and so that if there are any changes that need to occur within that flexibility, it is done with the recommendation of the, I work with the audit committee and Dr. Crawford to make any changes that we need. If there's a major change that, to the audit plan, it would come again to the board for approval. So anyway, again, I want to thank you for this opportunity and I welcome any questions you may have.
Any questions, board?
I reviewed it and it looks, looks right on par with a lot of the ones I said in on when I was on the audit committee and I was glad to see that, you know, we're looking after the risk that, as far as our construction goes and those major dollars out there. So it all looks well to me.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? If there's no discussion, I'll take a motion to approve item C as submitted.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the board, I mean, the school, the school, wow, wow. Board of trustees approve the internal audit services plan.
Second.
Thank you, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number G, or letter G, not number G.
Item G has to do with technology and we have some great support here tonight to be able to explain this to y'all. So Joseph Jacks can come down to the table. John Orbaugh is manning the system behind us. He can provide some input as well. And then Ms. Bjork, our CFO, can also provide some financing information for the board because it is a decent number for the board's consideration. But I think you'll find after this presentation that bundling this up, this upfront's going to save us quite a bit of money in the long term. Are y'all going to leave Mr. Jacks there by himself? Welcome to the big leagues, buddy.
It's okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank y'all for, let me present this to y'all. We're very excited about this opportunity to upgrade our infrastructure. We think we've got a really good deal here. And so, just real quickly, the virtual desktop is, this upgrade is two parts. So there's the hardware server side of things and then there's the software that everything runs on that allows us to present these virtual desktops to our staff and our students. So the current hardware that we run on right now is getting kind of outdated. It's about five years old. It's no longer performing to the extent we need it to, to be able to provide the desktops and the performance that we need for our students. So beginning back in February, we started reviewing ten to twelve different options from several different vendors. And we ultimately chose a solution from HPE, a synergy solution, due to several different factors, outstanding performance, it was cost, the cost was there, it was in the right range, physical attributes of the, of this solution, and the future upgrade ability. One of the things we ran into just regarding physical attributes was our server room that all of our gear is in has a weight limit on the floor. And so many of the options that we looked at were nineteen hundred pounds, two thousand pounds, and our floor has a thirteen hundred pound limit. So this is one of the options that fit physically in our server room, and it also gives us the ability to upgrade later down the road if we need to for a lot cheaper price without having to do a fourth lift upgrade. This, this equipment will enable us to go ahead and finish converting the rest of our campuses, the two high schools, the three middle schools remaining and two elementary schools, to be upgraded off of our twelve to fifteen-year-old laptops that the staff currently has and bring them up to snuff with the rest of the district and also supports our move to Windows ten across the district for our staffs and students. It also provides increased performance and speed across the district for everybody, going to give everybody a big boost in speed, power, and they'll see a big performance increase. So the total cost for this hardware and a five-year maintenance support is two point seven million. So that's the hardware side of things. Then on top of the hardware is the software that sits up, resides in the hardware and runs, that runs everything. So our VMware enterprise software is, that software supports our virtual servers that run all, everything in the district as well as the desktops that we provide to staff and students. It allows for anywhere, anytime access from any device to all of our district resources. So anybody can be, anybody that can get a web browser or internet access, they can access district resources, they can access their files, they can access, for their printers, they have access to anything from anywhere, from home, from their own device, or from a device that we provide to them. Our current enterprise license agreement, with this is software that we already have. So our enterprise license agreement is expiring this year. So it's time to do something different. We had two options. One is the buy-as-you-go plan, which is not a very good option because every year, if you're not on an E L A, your price increases substantially each year. If we were to stay on the buy-as-you-go payment plan, so to speak, the total would be four point one million over five years. It also leaves a six-year out there that would cost seven hundred thousand dollars in that one year alone. However, we have the option now to sign a new E L A that reduces our costs significantly from a cost of over five years down to one point seven million, saving us two point four million dollars over a five-year period. It also protects our six-year at a pre-negotiated cost of two hundred and fourteen thousand, saving us four hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars in that one year alone. For a total savings of six years, over a six-year period of two point nine million. And you can see in the graphic there just the comparison if we continued paying, if we were to start paying buy-as-you-go or if we were to sign into a new enterprise license agreement. So just kind of a summary of our overall plan that we have together. And again, like Dr. Crawford said, bundling this together saved us a significant amount of money rather than doing the hardware separate from the software. But the total, the total package, the HP synergy server infrastructure solution, essentially two point seven million, the VMware enterprise license agreement over five years, one point seven, total expenditure of four point four million for a savings over six-year of two point nine million dollars. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I know we didn't, you didn't talk about this yet. It's might come up or not. One is, this, we've already increased the bandwidth of our school system, correct?
The internet bandwidth is being increased Wednesday.
Wednesday? This Wednesday?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And what did that, what was it at and then was it going to?
It was at three gigabits. We're going to ten. So we're tripled our internet bandwidth.
Okay. So that was done on, this is not part of that. We've already, y'all have already approved that board. So student accessibility, staff accessibility, is that on the bandwidth side or is it on this side or both?
Kind of both. This software, this gives us the ability, this is, this what gives us the ability, the ability to have students sit down at their computer at home and log in and get their desktop, just like they're sitting in the classroom. Staff as well. They can sit down at home, they can go to the library, they can get on their friend's computer, they can get access to their desktop, just like they're sitting in the classroom. The bandwidth piece that you're talking about gives us the ability to allow more folks in because that's the pop coming into our network. And we're tripling that on Wednesday. Like I said, you're approved of that.
Yeah, that's kind of been the choke point in our network. If y'all have tried to access stuff at Rose Stadium or, or anywhere. Rose Stadium's a different story, but anywhere of any one of our facilities, that's kind of the choke point. But in order to support that, now, there's another thing you talked about here, even though the savings proposal is over six years, does this set us up for even longer? I think we even talked about past this.
Yeah, this, this is a five-year purchase, the support on this for five years. The E L A on the VMware software is five years, which would be, at the end of that six years, we'd just negotiate another E L A for the software side. The hardware, at five years, we own it. However, it could last six, seven, eight, nine years. We also went with this solution. This was the one solution that gives us the opportunity to, down the road, whenever we need to add horsepower or if the stuff starts, like we are now at five or six years, it starts getting where we need to upgrade the equipment, we can pull out, this is what we call a chassis and blade design. We can pull the blades out of the chassis that are in our room, slide in new servers essentially without having to forklift the whole thing. We're not having to replace everything like we do now. We can just upgrade as, upgrade as we go essentially. So this gives us a good opportunity to upgrade our equipment now to get the rest of our district online and up to snuff with the rest of the, the rest of the district because right now, our two high schools, three of our middle schools, two of our elementaries, we don't have the horsepower and the equipment behind the system to finish upgrading the district.
So we've got three years till we move into the new high schools. I guess what you're proposing tonight does fit in the scheme of the, of the technology infrastructure of the new high schools?
Yes, sir. This will get us set up and ready to go so that when we're ready to move in, we just, everything will be there.
And one more time, V D I, I know we've thrown around a lot of acronyms. E L A is,
E L A is the enterprise--
Licensing--
Enterprise License Agreement.
Okay, there you go. And V D I is virtual desktop, what's the I stand for?
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure and--
I apologize, I'm a tech guy. I'm not really a--
Cloud-based?
Good speaker.
Is that, is that a better way to think about this, that it's done over the network as opposed to--
Essentially, it's in the cloud, yeah. It's, we have our own cloud in our server room at the administration building. We have our own cloud and we serve up the desktops to our students, to our staff, that allows them to do their job or their homework from anywhere without having to necessarily send equipment home with them. They can do it from anywhere.
One last thing and then y'all can take this over. You know, on our, on our M and O side, three cents of our tax rate every year is dedicated to preventative maintenance. And we've kind of been going along, just budgeting year to year on technology for big-ticket items like this. So this is kind of a mini preventative maintenance proposal here for our, on the technology side. Technology is certainly driving a lot of our operations. It's also driving our learning environments, whether we like it or not. It is something where we have to get better at and that's one reason we have this proposal in front of it. We'll quit talking and let's all ask questions.
Questions, board?
Well, it appears that it saves money, two point nine over five years, and it's, appears to be better for the end user, for our students and our staff. And I don't see how both of those things don't result in better student outcomes. So I'm down.
Any other questions?
Tosh, why don't you explain the financial part of this since, since you're there?
Okay, this, the hardware portion, we budgeted around a million dollars in this year's budget for it. And a portion of the two point nine million of the hardware, or two point seven, is five years' worth of maintenance on that hardware. And that will just be expensed over five years. It's basically a five-year project and we have the money in the budget to do this. Now, the software side, we already have that pretty much in the budget because we've been paying maintenance and for our software agreements, and so that's already in the budget also.
Okay. If there are no other questions, then I would accept a motion on item, where am I here?
G.
G.
I move that we approve the purchase and update as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Nation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. H and I, Dr. Crawford?
H and I is kind of a combo thing. So as Coach Priest makes his way up to the table and Mr. Loper can make his way up to the table as well to explain these two items. We made a decision, I don't know, when was that decision, Mr. Loper, in regard to go ahead and cutting Red Raider Drive all the way through, I guess it was after last spring, right? So May of this, of twenty seventeen, of twenty eighteen, excuse me, this spring, to go ahead and finish out Red Raider Drive all the way through the Lee project. That happened to be right through the actual baseball facility that was on the Lee property. Saved us about a quarter of a million dollars, I believe, in dirt. Is that correct? Because we were able to repurpose that, that field over into the actual pad, I guess, of the project. Is that right?
Yeah, it was actually the select field because we were able to use that dirt that would build those front parking lots.
Sure.
At the front of the buildings. Yes.
So that left the Lee softball and baseball-- So that left the Lee softball and baseball without actual facilities to practice at. We also are having the beginning of construction at John Tyler, and eventually their facilities will also be under construction over the next three years. A group of daddies recognized that and approached Coach Priest about what they could possibly do in regard to raising up some donations, and in regard to providing a, a covered practice facility, for lack of a better term, not, not like the ones that are going to be at the high schools, but one at Mike Carter Field for softball, baseball, to use in possibly even golf, in inclement weather, since we do not, they didn't have one there. They kind of approached some of the healthcare facilities here locally, and we do have a, as y'all know, we have a sponsorship ship agreement with Christus Trinity Mother Francis Hospitals and Clin, and clinics at Rose Stadium. And as part of that contract, it also says they have first right of refusal. So Coach Priest, on any other projects in regard to donations or funds raised from other healthcare organizations or groups, so Coach Priest, take it from there, I've introduced it, and talked to the board about the possibility of, of what the proposal is as far as the naming rights at Mike Carter, and then maybe what the ins and outs of the project could be.
Well, as we, you know, by losing that, the baseball field, we've got so, at Mike Carter, you know, now that puts every team going to Mike Carter practice, being your JV, your freshman team, your varsity team, and then also John Tyler's there, and you have TJC. So there was definitely a need to, to provide some facilities for the, for our teams to be able to get some practice in, and so that was a, you know, as the dads got, got in contact with me, the booster clubs, you know, so we, we were just exploring some options of trying to go out and trying to find, find some funds to, to be able to accomplish that, of getting a kind of an indoor facility, or a covered facility. So from there, I approached Christus Trinity Mother Francis, and, and, and went to them and, and discussed, you know, kind of what, see if they could help us on that. Where we went from there was, was just trying, you know, they were interested, but they wanted to have some naming rights of, of Mike Carter Field. So we kind of went down that path, and, and they agreed to provide the funds for, for a facility, and in exchange for naming rights at, at Mike Carter Field. You know, I think that facility, you know, being able to do that, will give us some options, you know, be able to accommodate a lot of, a lot of teams as we, as we get out there, and so I, I think that's an, that's an option that we wanted to explore.
Any questions for Coach Priest?
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
There would be a covered practice field?
Batting cages, so, so, yeah, if you were, kind of the best place, probably the best place that you might be able to see something like that would be kind of over, you know, something similar at Faulkner Park, but also at DBAT, being able to have indoor covered cages where you can retract and also be able to go in and throw, and, and so be able to kind of, kind of a multipurpose place where we can get a lot of kids in there and, and get a lot of work done, being pitching, being hitting, we could also drop some nets, put golf in there, you know, softball, being able to use that as well, so it would just, you know, being able to schedule different things to be able to get kids in and out.
And where would that be located?
Be down, I guess-
I can picture the field, so I'm trying to figure where would it be.
Okay, so the, I guess one of the areas, the area that we're looking at is down the left field line, just past the grandstands and that kind of open area, right past there. So we've kind of, you know, we've gone and kind of looked at it, done some initial drawings and things like that with Mr. Loper. So we've been able to kind of do that, and, and so I think that's kind of our best fit, that it could be placed.
So proposal, what is the full name to be considered? I see, I see. Is it Christus Trinity Mother Francis at Mount, Mike Carter Field?
Mike Carter Field.
Okay.
And, and we've had a great relationship on the stadium, and, and, you know, and it's been able to do that, I think having two facilities there puts it pretty neat for them, and, and gives them some exposure, and, and so I, I mean, it's been great working with them, and, you know, I guess since 2004, and just kind of wanting to expand on that, and, and, and they've been great partners, so, so it's something we would for sure want to look at.
And Board, I'll, I'll refresh your memory to the last time we re-upped this contract with Mother Francis. After they reviewed it, we reviewed it, there was a reduction in the annual contribution on the naming rights, we agreed to it. And so, you know, I think that the commitment from them was that we would, could review this later on down the line, and if there were other opportunities that did arise, that they would actually increase the annual commitment. And so they're not only just looking at this, but they're looking at other opportunities to support all of our programs, under the exclusivity of this agreement. Y'all, y'all remember that the Mother Francis Stadium, Christus Trinity Mother Francis Stadium, has some exclusivity clauses in it in regard to advertising any medical or healthcare organizations at any of our facilities, that they, that they do have first right of refusal. So it does kind of fit into what they suggested whenever we, whenever we did this, in regard to the, the opportunities down the road. I guess we're, are we two years, or three years into the, this new agreement?
It was, I think we have eight years left, I think it was orig, a 12-year agreement.
But I think we've signed the new agreement three years ago now, is what I believe. So it kind of lines up to what they committed to us in regard to that, and I think they've got some more ideas down the road as well.
Yeah, and they, none of that, so it's kind of three, we have the stadium, we also have the scoreboard, and then this piece, and they're trying to, they're wanting to align everything together. So I think there's eight years left on the contract, they've committed to eight more years on the, on the scoreboard, and then tying in this for eight years, so trying to get them all where they start at the same time and end at the same time, so getting more, some continuity in that.
Do you think they're angling at naming rights for the entire district? As in Christus Trinity Mother Francis Tyler ISD? Possibly?
For the right price?
Okay. No, serious question. Okay, dimensions of the actual facility, do we generally know how big, what kind of footprint it would have? As big as this room, half as big as this room, type of thing?
Three bags.
Three quarters the size of this room?
Three cages.
Yeah, it's three cages, and cages, I think it's like 84 feet long.
Okay.
The, the building, and right at 54 feet wide.
Okay.
The plans have already been developed, and Fitzpatrick Architects, we, we have a complete set of plans, and they donate a lot of their services to this, to get the building done, and we actually are ready to get started, if so approved.
Well, we, we certainly still have to bid out-
Yes.
-the project. So let's talk about that real quick. This commitment for Mother Francis, Coach Priest, Mr. Loper, if, if bids come back on this project above what we're anticipating, I'm going to throw you a softball right here, so this, the little, or batting practice fastball down the middle. What's the district's commitment financially, if, if, if it comes in over what the, the agreement is?
Zero commitment.
Zero. So what are we gonna, what are we gonna tell those that want to, to get this done?
It's, it's getting with them and getting them to, to go out and raise additional funds if they, if those are needed. You know, I think our goal is to make sure we come in at budget.
Sure.
You know, we had some initial kind of pricing at what we thought it was going to be, so that's kind of what we went and asked for. If it did, but we've had delays and pricing and different things that are always going up, so we may miss, I mean, if it did happen to go that way, then we would go back to the booster clubs and ask them, you know, to help us go identify. And, and we actually do have a couple people that have, have expressed additional interest in being able to help on certain things of the project as well.
And I might add that that was always their intent in the beginning, even prior to this Christus Trinity Mother Francis naming rights.
So although we've, we've kind of discussed both of these items at the same time, the sponsorship and renaming is not contingent on the other, it's based off of Mike Carter Field. And if we were unable to secure the funding to build the additional practice facility, it wouldn't have any impact on the naming rights deal, is that correct?
Yeah, I think we're just, you know, they're wanting the naming rights, and I think that's our intention, was to be able to use those funds to go towards a facility.
So no bond money used for this, no-
No, sir.
MNO taxpayer money used for this, this is only going to be paid for through sponsorships and donations?
Yes, sir, correct.
Since we've already drawn the plans, do you have pictures or renderings or anything of what's going to be put inside?
No, sir, I don't. I can get some, it's basically, it's a metal building, and has, you know, three overhead doors, couple of personnel doors, all, the, two of the doors at each end face the field side, from the, from where you're, either you're pitching or batting at each end of the building, so, sorry, I don't.
Is anyone concerned about putting a metal building inside of a historic baseball park? Has anybody talked about that? How to match it with what's there?
It's tucked away.
Yeah, and we currently have a metal building inside there as well now.
My preference would be that it be ballpark green.
Yeah.
Kind of blends a little bit better, where it's that color instead of the taupe cream that we have down the right field line, that the metal buildings aren't existing there, if we get to that point. But that is, that is a concern.
Looking at it now.
So the process would be, if I is approved, that selects a construction manager at risk, the next step would be a GMP, and at that point, you'd bring full renderings for us to see?
That's correct.
Where's your metal building existing? The one back in the very far corner back there, against the parking lot?
Right field line, at the end of the-
Yeah.
Is your concern that it blends in with the present aesthetics of the park?
Yeah, I mean, it'd be like putting a metal building in-
An enhancement, yeah.
Azalea District and the park, or in, you know, in the Rose Garden or something. Just, we need to make sure it fits in, and that it's not really seen, you know, maybe, you know, I just-
Would be nice to see a picture.
Mid-century metal?
Is there such?
It's older than- Okay, so if I is approved, you'll bring renderings along with the GMP for us to consider it some, do you have an estimate for how long that would take?
To do the renderings?
When we might see a GMP?
Oh, it'll probably take them 45 weeks to bid.
Okay.
To, to get all the bid documents out, so. I s, I can certainly bring renderings at that time.
So is this just to accept this wonderful offer from Trinity Mother Francis, and then we will approve the renderings when they are presented to us, Dr. Crawford?
Yeah, H is to consider the naming rights of Mike Carter Field. 300-plus thousand, spread out over eight years, I think, is that correct, Mr. Priest?
Correct.
That's H, and then I is to actually choose RPR as the CMAR, so they can go out and bid and get the renderings done with partnership with Fitzpatrick Architects, who does stuff with us already, and then bring back something to the board for your ultimate approval.
File approval.
Ultimate approval, yes, ma'am, we cannot move forward without that. So hopefully we can answer some questions that you posed tonight.
It's pretty quick for, I didn't hear about it till I got the, the email, supplemental email, that, you know, this was going to be in the packet, so. Seems, I love, appreciate Mother Francis, that's a no-brainer, that's easy, thankful for their money. Appreciate the dads that are concerned about trying to improve things in our district. Not as impressed with getting something the day of the, you know, an email the day of, and not having any idea of what it's going to look like, or anything like that, so. It's just a, it's a neat place over there, it's a special stadium constructed in an era that was important in our community, and I just want to make sure we're doing something that looks good in there, and especially if it's really only built for three years, I know we'll continue to use it long after that, but that's what's driving it, so we want to make sure we're doing something that is going to look good for the long term. So I'd like to see what it is before I vote on a guarantee, is some contractor's going to get paid, or that, or that we're, you know, anything beyond, I'm open to, to doing that work, but we need to, we need to get a better look at this.
Okay, any other questions, discussion?
All right, I ask one last time, I will repeat. Is this just for naming rights, and then later we're coming back, and you're going to present to us the renderings for our approval before these buildings of this building is built, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, my understanding is I would bring it back with the GMP, which at that point, the GMP would either be approved, unless you want me to bring back renderings without the GMP.
See, I'm looking at what your recommendation is, it says, the administration recommends to approve, the board approve a title sponsor agreement with Christus Trinity Mother Francis Health System for Mike Carter Field naming rights, so I'm assuming all we do is vote to approve naming rights, and you're going to come later, or is all of this all in one?
Well, I needs to be approved, so that we can actually go to bid and get renderings done on the actual project.
Mr. Loper, I think hearing the concerns from Mr. Bergfeld, to the extent that you need to bring options to the table when you bring a GMP, that would be more and or less aesthetically appealing, that's probably a prudent way to move forward.
Yeah, and I don't know whether it's, how, what it looks like, whether, it could be great, it could be no problem at all with exactly what you've got, full plans already drawn on, but we don't know.
Okay, then I accept a motion on item H and I.
H and I?
Yes, H and I, we can do them individually if we need to.
I'm comfortable with both, although I do think that, you know, I think Andy's right on as far as aesthetics go. So I'll, I'll move that we approve items H and I.
Thank you, Mr. Washington, is there a second?
Yeah, I have a second.
Okay, Reverend Mason, seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Now, secondly, but I also want to say that I would hope next time when something is expected of us to approve, that we will have the rendering in front of us to view. I think that's something right.
Item number 11, curriculum instruction consent agenda. Any items to be pulled? Any general discussion? Dr. Crawford or Board? Hearing none, then I'll accept a motion for the approval of ABC and D.
I move that we approve items 11, ABC and D.
Thank you, Dr. Nation, a second?
Second motion.
Thank you, Ms. Washington, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 12, policy updates, first reading, Dr. Crawford?
There's a bunch of them. And administration has gone through and reviewed these in your packet. Feel free to peruse those and contact superintendent or the appropriate assistant superintendent if you have any questions about those policies that are provided in your packets.
Any questions or discussion on the policies? Item 13, future business.
Board workshop on October 4th, going to be pretty exciting, Lone Star Governance's quarterly review, and the last one. And then October 15th, regular board meeting.
Okay, it brings us to the final agenda item, adjournment, do I have a motion for adjournment?
I move adjourn.
Thank you, Reverend Mason and Dr. Nation, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. We stand adjourned. We stand adjourned.